Okay, we'd like to welcome everyone out to our city council meeting tonight. As you can see, there's not very many people up here. We've got Councilman Gordon and Councilman Mendenhall who are on vacation. And this little bobblehead doll you see right there, that's Councilman Scholes. He is calling in from Washington DC, which is, according to our ordinance, we can phone in, and that makes this a legal meeting because you have to have three council members here for a legal meeting. And so, he's on the phone, and if we lose him, then we end the meeting. So, don't go away, Kier.
I won't, Mayor.
All right. I have asked Chief Adams if he would give us a opening prayer to start the meeting.
Our Father in heaven, we're grateful for the opportunity to meet together this evening. We come before this time to pray for thy help in fighting the fires, protection of the firefighters, protection of the homes and the individuals that are working these events. Father, we're grateful for the many blessings which we receive from each and every day. We ask thee to bless us this night that we might be able to conduct the business of the city in a manner that would be best for the citizens that we serve. Please continue to guide and direct and bless us, and we say this name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chief. I've asked Porter Hall, one of our scouts, to come up and lead us in the pledge allegiance, so if you'd like to come up.
Will the audience please stand? Bring your pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Porter. Good-looking shirt. Okay, let's move into public comments. Anyone here from the public that'd like to come up and address the mayor and the council? You're welcome to come up. Come up and state your name.
I have the agenda.
Nope, you just state your name. You get three minutes to address us.
All right, so, I am Heidi Bradshaw. I actually live out on State Road 51. So, I am here about the development of, I guess, the zone change from R1 to R3. So, I am representing the people out there that live out there on that road.
Do we have this on the agenda?
We do, yes.
But is it a public hearing?
It is a public hearing.
So, I'm not meaning to cut you off, but we'll have a public hearing, and we'll let you address us during that public hearing.
Okay.
Would that be all right with you?
Yep, that works.
You have to stay longer.
Yeah, as soon as you get to talk longer, then.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Heidi. Anyone else that has anything they'd like to address the council and the mayor on? Okay, see none, then we'll go into council comments. And I've asked Scott and Seth to kind of give us a little update on the fire. I'm sure it's on everybody's concern. First of all, let me just tell you that Spanish Fork has been actively engaged in support for this fire. Many of you have probably come down by the fairgrounds. This is where the, all the firefighters are staged. This is the base camp, as you would. And I'll tell you what, I just wanted to let you know what kind of are people that we have here working. Seth, as our city manager and all his department heads, have worked around the clock to set this up, and I'm really proud of all them. We spent a lot of time there. The last five days, we've lived down there, pretty much, organizing and helping things out. So, I'm gonna have Seth and Scott talk a little bit about this little intro we got.
Little bit of whatever, right?
Right.
So, what you're viewing on this video that Scott is playing is our airport, which is normally a wonderful airport that serves the function that it has, but during this last week, the flights in and around, out of this airport, pause that for a second, Scott, have increased so much that we have had a temporary tower come in. And so, this, currently, the Spanish Fork Airport is under tower control, which is not normally the case. This is still, this is a shot of the tower. It's just a mobile command, if you will. It comes in on a trailer. Two gentlemen, two air traffic controllers, sit in this space with radios, talking to crews, directing flights in and out. In the morning, it's a little bit tough. These gentlemen don't have great visibility, just like you and I haven't had great visibility the last few days, right? The smoke that fills our canyon, or our valley, from the nighttime. But they watch helicopters, a lot of helicopter traffic coming in and out of there. So, we, our airport right now has an air traffic control. So, this is an aerial shot of our fairgrounds right now. If you've ever gone to the Fiesta Days rodeo, you might remember parking in this portion of the back parking lot of our fairgrounds. And as a visitor, you might have also noticed this area of our parking lot has been filled with contestant trailers and horses and things like that. Well, right now, it's home to the Incident Command Post for the Pole Creek Fire Team that's based out, let's see, that's the Great Western, I think.
Great Basin.
Great Basin, thank you. Great Western is the company that put in our fairgrounds arena. But they have set up an Incident Command Post. So, what you have right here is a number of different yurts, tents, that function for their different operations. They have a kitchen and a kitchen facility right here. And this is all in the back parking lot. This is actually and absolutely functioning like a constructed office. The square footage of an office, I don't have a good number for you, but they, with the amount of office space that they have, set up here in and around the fairgrounds. Go ahead. So, as this video pans around, we'll go inside of this area. They've got their demobilization, their finance section, their safety, their operations. This is a shot of this particular Incident Command Commander, so he's the number-one guy in charge. These are those hoses I was telling you guys about. Those hoses that I just outlined, for those that watched, they have been stringing those hoses all over the mountainside, specifically around homes, whether it be in Covered Bridge or Elk Ridge or Woodland Hills. Firefighters come at the end of their shift. Usually, I think they have 12-hour shifts, maybe 14-hour shifts, so sometime around 6:00, 7:00, 8:00 at night, they'll start to roll in. And they literally are sleeping in tents, and a lot of people have struggled with that. They want to give them a bed to sleep in. It's better for them, actually. This is how they operate when they get in a fire situation. If they were to come into yours or my home, they'd be really smelly and really dirty, and it would be kind of uncomfortable for them. So, they, this is how, when they get into a fire setting, that they operate. So, last week on Thursday, Thursday afternoon, we were given the report that the Pole Creek and Bald Mountain fires had grown. The Bald Mountain fire had been this size, this is an infrared map, and so for those of you that can see it, the darker the color, the hotter the image. And the Pole Creek, the Bald Mountain fire had been this big, and the Pole Creek fire had been about that big. Thursday, with the winds, the way that they were, the fires quadrupled in size in one day, which sent all of us in, into a heightened sense of urgency. And so, Thursday night, of course, is when Elk Ridge and Woodland Hills were on pre-evacuation, then eventually on evacuation, and a portion of Spanish Fork. So, Friday morning, our crews, this is a shot of us getting a briefing from our emergency manager and fire deputy, Ryan Baum, and a number of our staff, including representatives from Public Safety, Electricity, you've got our fairgrounds manager there. Typically, you'd say he doesn't have any role to play in an emergency, except he's home-based to the whole support of it, right? Finance and our secretarial staff that answer the phones, everybody getting a briefing so we could be on the same page. And so, Friday, we started, and we had a cooperators meeting. We've had one of these every day where we get reports of what's going on. And these are just some still shots in and around the fairgrounds. We'll kind of rifle through those, get kind of an up-close shot. You'll see tents staged all over. This is in the pasture where a lot of times we have our cows, or rather, our horses and livestock during the rodeo. This is a look inside of the Incident Command Post, and each one of these tables is some different function. And this is in our Ponderosa Building. This is our, the Joint Information Center, since we're in government, we'll call it a JIC. But this is where everybody comes together and makes sure that every agency has the same information so we aren't confusing ourselves. And I saw a note on the back of that. It was purchased with fund sees from drug trafficking, so that's why they have such a nice thing. Apparently, there's sometimes a lot of money in drugs, and sometimes it gets intercepted by the police, so they bought that mobile command with it. This picture was taken this morning, and I think is a wonderful tribute, maybe, to share with our community. As we rifle through some of these pictures, you saw that was Weber County, Murray City, West Valley City, Provo City, North Fork, which is kind of the Sundance area, Utah County, Sandy City has a truck. All these different agencies have come to support the fire efforts, and it's quite humbling and quite amazing to see everybody that comes and participates in it. There are fire lines that have been cut from, I want to say, Santaquin all the way to Spanish Fork now, that in the event the fire gets too close, they can defend from that fire line. So, these pictures show you what a fire line looks like in the mountains, and some of them are pretty narrow, like this road track, and firefighters want a place they can base from and fight to one side or the other, and if they have to make an escape, they have that, that won't be engulfed in flames, like maybe to the right or left of it. So, these fire lines exist. This is pretty cool. This is what they call a great pumpkin. And this is a home around Elk Ridge, and I don't know whose house it is, and they aren't in the room, but if they were, I apologize, I didn't ask for permission. But this is a great pumpkin. It's, thousands of gallons of water are inside of that, and they have a pump there, and it's ready to roll. You can see these rolls of tubing, and as we go around this house, go ahead, Scott, that's just the water. You go around the house, there are these little sprinklers that they have set up about every 30 or so feet. And each one of these just will spray for a while. If the fire were to get close on one side or the other, they would turn this on, it would wet this area, and wouldn't necessarily make it impenetrable to fire, but it would make it wet and would make it slow down, and giving, it would give the firefighters the opportunity to be able to get in and attack the fire and stop it. This is one of their methods, and a very effective method they have to preserve this particular structure. That's a lot of work for one home. And they have done this around, I think, Mayor, you were up in the Covered Bridge Canyon, just about every house or along the fire, or the forest edge of the...
They've got it all up around the homes, so most of the homes have got sprinklers around them.
All around it, which is quite impressive. We can go ahead and skip to the next. This afternoon, we met as a team to discuss our mountain, and of course, we want to make sure that our residents are protected. So, we have representatives from Parks and Recreation, Public Works, mapping, we had some gentlemen from the Forest Service, and we, Public Safety, and we were talking about how can we put in a fire line around the Spanish Oaks area, but do it in a way that is maybe natural, some way that could be useful, beneficial for us long-term, and something that we can preserve so that we always have a fire line. So, we've, we worked out a plan, and we went out on site, and it's gonna be that big. Oh, wait, no. We went out on site, and if Scott can find the map, which may be kind of hard, it's a little bit somewhere back there. Tomorrow, some residents around the Spanish Oaks area will see, well, that's weird.
I'll refresh it. Maybe it's here now.
Oh, there it is. Whoop, there it is.
On the right, oh, yeah.
So, to orient you, this is Powerhouse Road. Of course, everybody knows where the reservoir is. The cross is right up there. There's a road here, the Strawberry Canal Road, already runs a parallel to Powerhouse Road, but up the hill. So, that's a fire line, and then there's a very natural slope in here, and of course, a water line in here, so we'd use that as a fire line. You get up to the gun club, and that's a very, very effective fire line. It's vegetated, it's manicured, watered, and so no fire wouldn't come through there. So, you've got a really good fire line here. We'll cut up, somewhere up here, and we may do that with hand tools. It may literally be a walk, march, cutting and creating a fire line here, wherever it fits best. And then we've got some trails up here that we can widen, that function with how the mountain is already being used. And then, of course, we've got this roadway here for the campground. And then they, today, were carving fire lines up past here, so our fire lines can join with theirs and create a very natural and effective barrier that will be used in the event that the fire gets here today with this incident, or maybe in the future. Of course, we always have the possibility of wildfires here, and so this, this is something that we wanted to create. Now is the good time to do it, and we can use it forever if we can maintain that. That's the kind of a look at what we've done the last couple of days. Scott, maybe you can come up and, or from that microphone there, you share a little bit of an update, any update you have on what you've heard today, and if there's any news or any briefings you want to give to the council.
So, for those that don't know, I'm Scott Aylitt, Public Information Officer for Spanish Fork City. And so, as Seth had mentioned, what they've set up down at the fairgrounds is called the JIC. It's the Joint Information Center. And all of the PIOs from the different organizations, the County Sheriff's Office, the County, Spanish Fork, Springville, all of the cities, the Forest Service, the fire PIOs, were all stationed in that van, in that big old RV. And it's really beneficial because as information comes in, I hear it just at the same time that everybody else does, and so I can inform our residents immediately when something happens. And so, we found that to be very beneficial to be stationed down there. Generally, the fire will do press releases in the morning and in the evening, and that's where we get the bulk of our information, is at about 9:00 AM, and then again at about 7:00 o'clock. In fact, I'll be leaving shortly to go to their 7:00 status update, where we're hoping to have some more information about the status of both fires. We anticipate that there will be a percent contained figure that they give this evening for the Bald Mountain fire. Right now, it's at zero, but they've done a lot of good work today, and they anticipate that they'll have a portion of it contained this evening. So, we recommend residents, if you want to know what is going on with the fire, there are a lot of different sources of information out there. Those that we recommend individuals go to first, if you want to know how is the fire affecting Spanish Fork City, go to Spanishfork.org, and right on the homepage, you'll see in the top left, there's a link here that says Pole Creek Fire Updates. It's also on a pop-up on the homepage as well. And if you click on either of those links, it will take you to a, our page that we update at least four times a day. Now, if there's breaking news that happens, obviously, we'll notify you as it happens. But right now, we're on a schedule of about 9:00 AM, noon, 3:00 PM, and at about 8:00 PM are our scheduled updates. Here, you'll find information that we post, kind of on that schedule, about what, you know, how's the fire impacting our community? You know, we have a neighborhood that's on a pre-evacuation status and is very interested to know whether or not an evacuation is going to take place. And so, we do our best to update this page so our residents know what's going on. The other sources that I recommend individuals go to, and you can find them all here, is this Insaweb. That link right there is the main page for the fire crews, and that's what they update throughout the day, is they get additional information. If you're on social media, we recommend the Uta-Wasatch Cache National Forest, Utah Fire Info, and the Utah County Sheriff's Office pages. Again, they're updating information that's not only relevant to Spanish Fork, but what's happening in Elk Ridge and Woodland Hills, up the canyon, and in other areas. And so, we recommend residents go here to get their information rather than other areas. You run the risk of hearing a rumor that may or may not be true, and then you run with that and gets a little shady. So, again, we encourage you to go to these sources. And if you have any questions, feel free to contact me, again, Scott Aylitt, the PIO for the city, and I'll do my best to answer any questions you might have about the fire. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, there's a lot going on. Obviously, Elk Ridge, Woodland Hills, Covered Bridge, those individuals have been evacuated from their homes. About 6,000 people are evacuated. Everyone has been awesome to take those people in. They'd set up Salem Hills High School for people to sleep. Nobody slept there, because they all went with family. Here in Utah, we all have a lot of families, family, friends. They have a, the Red Cross has a list of people that would love to take people in. So, that's been really great to see. There's been donations come in, and we've had so many donations come in. The school district has opened up their warehouse there in Salem, and all the donations have been coming there from noon to 6:00. They've had so much there, they had to ask people not to bring anymore. Now, it's on an individual need, and so they're shooting out. Okay, they got down to 13 paper plates, and they said, hey, we need paper plates. All of a sudden, they had 13,000 paper plates. So, they're trying to get that so it's adjusted, so they'll get the stuff in that they need. The nice thing about, I talked to August Brown with the Red Cross. She said, we had so many donations, the fires that you've probably heard about up in Harriman, three homes were burned, they sent donations up there, and we're able to help those people up there from all the donations that we'd received down here. So, that's, that was pretty cool. So, everyone's been really good, the citizens have really helped out. They anticipate, they keep, the biggest question is, when can these people go back to their homes? Well, they don't know. They're telling them, plan on two weeks to get through everything. If they can get this fire out sooner, you know, then maybe, but we'll see. But I just want to throw out a special thanks to everyone that's helped with this and been a part of this. And the biggest thing that people can do is keep these people in your prayers and pray for good weather condition. You know, we have that nice canyon breeze, and sometimes it's a great blessing for us, and sometimes it can be a real curse for us when there's a fire going. So, keep all these people in your prayers. And once again, I want to thank all our staff, all our people here with the city, everything that they've done. You just don't know what's been happening, as Seth and I have been going around every day to different meetings and different areas. It's amazing, and I want to thank everyone for that, and hopefully, we can get this fire out and get it out quick. So, with that, let's go to council comments. Councilman Beck?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to echo Mayor's comments for our staff specifically tonight on all the overtime and energy and knowledge and expertise that they're putting in to make things work and keep our residents informed. Thank you so much. A couple of things, from the Fiesta Days Committee, last night, Carol Lee Danzy and I, she is our current Fiesta Days Chair, we extended the invitation to Clint and Karen Muehlstein to be our Fiesta Days co-chairs, and they accepted that, and will take on that role for the next three years, and are excited and enthusiastic. So, it's kind of scary when you have a council member and then a chairman come into your home, and they, you could just tell, like, what are we gonna have to do? But they gladly accepted, so thank you to them. And then, with the Chamber of Commerce, Zion's Bank here on Main Street was recognized as Business of the Month, and that's voted on by all the Chamber of Commerce members. And last week, Grifols Plasma Center had their grand opening, and we were able to go listen to some speakers and get a tour of the Plasma Center, and it was, it's a really cool place and where they're giving back and helping save lives. So, that is now open, if anyone is interested in that. And then, the Chamber's annual Summer End BBQ was scheduled for tomorrow night, and they canceled that. Several members have been evacuated from their homes, including Heather Yowd, the Chamber Director, and so they canceled that and are just going to do their luncheon. So, if any members of the Chamber are watching, that is just gonna be a luncheon tomorrow. And then, I think, lastly, the Arts City Council will be putting on their annual Harvest Moon Hurrah this Saturday, and that will be at the City Park behind the library from 3:00 to 6:00. And that's a free event, lots of entertainment, activities, food. So, if you're free, run on over to the City Park and join us for a lot of fun there. And that's all I have.
Good. Councilman Scholes?
Mayor, as you had mentioned, just want to echo the Mayor's comments. Truly appreciate everything that the staff and firefighters, everyone's doing for our neighboring community, and again, our prayers do go out to them. One big item of business to make sure everyone's aware of this Saturday is the Harvest Moon Hurrah, from 3:00 to 9:00 PM. Some great musical entertainment, E.V. Claire, Josh Mortensen, the Green Man Group drum group will be there. We have everything from the Spanish Fork Corral to the Nibleton Harmonic Orchestra. Just a great, great event as we kick off this autumn season. The Fine Arts Committee and the volunteers have done a fantastic job getting that set up. So, just really appreciate all their, all their hard work, and this is free for the community, be able to come out and enjoy. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Hargan?
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, I just want to echo the Mayor's comments. When we watch these updates that they give about this fire and the huge, huge acreage that this fire has covered, and we have, they, to this point, has not lost a structure, just absolutely overwhelms me that these firefighters are working day in, day out. The county sheriffs, our police department, our Public Works, our public fire departments are working tirelessly to keep our community whole and keep these homes safe. And even when it's night, they're patrolling to make sure that their homes are staying safe where these have evacuated, and so grateful. Please keep these firefighters in your prayers because they are in harm's way, and I'm grateful that our community is always steps up to help and does their part. Last week, we had the opportunity to attend the ULCT convention. We go there as council and departments to learn, and we've had that opportunity, and it's always a great experience because we get an opportunity to rub shoulders with a lot of the communities that are in our state, share ideas, listen to some things that are going on in other communities, and it's always a good experience. One good thing is our council, Mike Mendenhall. He was second vice president, and now he's moved to first vice president. I don't know if I should announce that, but that's pretty awesome that he puts a lot of hours in there on behalf of our city and to support the ULCT up there, and continues to do that. And he is a part of our council and this organization, and supports many cities throughout our community. We also had a Water Board meeting, and just real short, we're continuing as we try to develop the Mount Niblewater Agency and Ground Development Water so that as we go forward, we can manage our water for the future as we continue to grow. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Okay, I have a proclamation that I'd like to read and put into force. Proclamation for the Constitution Week. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embells, embodies the principles of limited government and republic dedicated to rule by law, and whereas September 17, 2018, marks the 231st anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of the proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I, Steve Lifeson, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Spanish Fork in the State of Utah, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideas of the founders of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through the guardian of our liberties, remembering lost rights may never be regained. Therefore, in the witness thereof, I heretofore set my hand and cause the seal of Spanish Fork City to be affixed this 18th day of September of the year of our Lord 2018. So, I will sign that and make that proclamation. And I can't, I guess you were here to see me sign that, right? All right, good deal. Okay, let's move on. I guess we're not... All right, good deal. Okay, let's move on. I guess we're not doing one-on-one, is that right? Okay. So, let's move into consent items.
Motion to approve consent items?
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Beck. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. We are now moving to new business. And, uh, so, we've got the Meadow Creek Ridge Zone Change and Preliminary Platte. So, Dave, would you like to talk to us? And then, this has been, uh, um, shown as a public hearing and it will be a public hearing, so.
It's exactly right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, some of you have seen this before a couple of different times. We've approved a townhome project, uh, the majority of the property that we'll talk about tonight before the applicants tonight would like that approval amended to include some additional acreage that until recently was either in Utah County or Springville City. You know that we recently annexed a little bit of property just to the north of, um, the existing approval and also did a boundary adjustment with Springville. So now those lands are in Spanish Fork. And we'll talk tonight about, uh, at least potentially amending the approval for the Meadow Creek Ridge Townhome Project to include that acreage and to change the zoning on it so that they could construct townhomes on that part of the property. A seventeen acre project with a hundred and sixty-one townhomes, that's what's proposed. So, just under ten units to the acre, that's a pretty customary density for a townhome development. As we look at this image here, you see the road C and D, that's the part. This is the part of the project here that maybe we could say is new. That's what would be added to what was previously approved over here. I think most of us are pretty familiar with the subject property. This is the southern boundary of the development, which abuts the Whispering Willows Townhomes just to the south. As we look, uh, we're looking from this vantage point, which is right at about State Road fifty-one, looking east. You can see railroad tracks over here. And actually, this land right here, or most of what we see in this image here eventually will be the continuation of Spanish Fork Parkway. So, the road that runs all the way from U.S. Highway six over near the intersection that the neighborhood Walmart is located on, north from there past Maple Mountain High School and through the Legacy Farms Development, it'll cross someplace in here through the Legacy Farms Project and come to about the point where this photo was taken, which is where it will cross State Road fifty-one and then tie into that part of which has already been constructed that leads over to the other Walmart and the rest of the Canyon Creek Development. Again, just another picture of the subject property, this home, I'll reference again when we look at the site plan in just a minute. Uh, there are several acres that create kind of a U shape to the project. That's property that is not owned by the developers, so that will, in essence, remain as is. So, getting back to, uh, back to this image here, um, the applicants have made a few changes even from what you have with the staff report that was sent last week and what we, we showed to the Planning Commission as presented here tonight. Um, the project is a combination of two different styles of townhomes. One, you'd often call a front-loaded type of a, a home where the garage, uh, is on the front of the house. The same side of the house as the front door. There are eighty-three of those types of units designed into this project. The other seventy-eight townhomes would be a rear-loaded townhome. So, those would be, uh, homes like the ones we see here along Road D where, uh, they're really in essence is just an alleyway that accesses garages. And the fronts of the homes front onto another public street, uh, such as what we call Road C and, and Road E on this image. There are others in the project as well. And just relative to that, uh, the council's aware, for example, with the joint meeting they had with the Planning Commission a couple of weeks ago, that we really have become very concerned about just how projects like this ultimately look and feel. Um, and I think in a lot of ways, we've taken some of the best aspects of these types of projects in the past. We've kind of hid those, um, while really exposing, you know, particularly with the building designs, some of the least interesting and least attractive parts of the projects to the most prominent locations in the developments. And I really appreciate the applicant working with us so that with this layout, I think, uh, inasmuch as you could expect with a site that frankly really is a challenge, um, again, given some acreage that, um, they're working around, uh, some really, really big power lines, proximity to railroad tracks, state road, limited points of access. The city's plans for a really, really big road on the south side of the project. So, there are some real design constraints the applicant has to work around here. And, and with that being the case, I think they've done a great job of trying to address the things that we've talked about. Um, maybe it's their misfortune that they've, they've come for approval at a time when our senses are, again, heightened. We're very aware of some of the things that have happened in the past that we don't want to see happen again. And they've been very cooperative and helpful, I think, in, in working to address our concerns. Before I look at the building elevations with everybody, I just want to touch on one of the main points that was raised in the Planning Commission meeting by way of a concern, parking. And really, two, two concerns relative to parking. Um, one being, is there a sufficient number of parking spaces in the project? And then secondly, are those spaces where they really need to be? Sometimes I think it's a little bit hard to decipher maybe what we're looking at here, so to point out a couple of different things. Um, for example, where we see this throughout the project, those are parking spaces that are intended to be, you know, for guests. Uh, you know, maybe, uh, in some cases for, uh, you know, a fourth or a fifth car, if anybody should have that, um, in the development. But, um, the majority of the parking we would anticipate would take place, uh, in garages or in driveways. And with this project, again, with eighty-three front-loading units, uh, two-car garage for each plus space in each driveway, conceivably at least for two cars. Um, the driveways as designed here are all twenty-five feet deep, uh, which we found in the past is necessary. Anything that's much shy of that ends up creating problems with cars that hang over, uh, onto driveways and so forth. Um, again, conceivably, four parking spaces in for each of those units. And I say that certainly acknowledging that oftentimes people keep things in their garage and so forth. It makes it impossible to have two cars in there. So, um, with that being the case, uh, again, we do have, uh, some guest parking and just additional parking elsewhere. As well, the applicant, um, has identified, uh, a space where, um, we have no units fronting onto some of the streets in the project. And you certainly, you could have parallel parking. Um, we allow that without, for example, them going in and striping, uh, parallel parking spaces. You could have the same thing happen elsewhere in the project where there's room on the street to park. But, um, the commission wanted them to explicitly note that. Because in some parts, for example, this area over here, the new area, um, where it's the rear-loaded type of townhome design, they don't have a driveway. So, there, you really are limited to the two spaces in the garage, parking out in front of the units. And in this case, for example, over on Road C out on the other side of the street as well. Same would be the case over on Road I. Um, and I think, you know, particularly looking at it with that in mind, the applicant's done a very good job of dispersing parking throughout the project. Um, taking everything into account that we show here with parallel spaces here and here totaling some thirty-three spaces, not counting parallel parking, other places in the project where frankly you could do it. And I think we'll see cars parked on the street in perfectly legal fashion. Um, they have three point two seven parking spaces per unit provided. We require two point three three for a project like this. So, almost to the extent of having one additional space per unit, uh, they've provided parking in the development. Um, and again, I, I do acknowledge that, uh, it's not uncommon at all for people to not be able to fit two cars in a garage. So, that's something that I would, uh, just kind of temper that number with maybe a little bit. But also, um, one concern that we don't talk a lot about is the idea that if you provide so much parking that it doesn't get used with some frequency, it just becomes storage space. So, there is a little bit of a balance that I think we need to be aware of in terms of how much parking we really want to see. At the same time, I don't think it's been our practice in the city to witness projects like this that end up having more parking than what's needed, um, which honestly is a little bit unique about Spanish Fork. Um, at three point three or so spaces per unit in this project, uh, they will have more parking here probably than any townhome development that has been built in the last several years in Utah County. Um, but at the same time, parking seems to get used, so, um... And Scott, I might need to have you help me a little bit.
Okay.
See if I got a hang up here. Let me try again. Yeah, getting hung up there. There we go. So, again, just, uh, this is the area that we're talking about relative to the zone change. The zoning on everything else has already been changed to R three. Um, so just focusing on this part here. And, uh, just a little bit relative to what I just touched on, um, some of the other issues that staff and the applicant have worked through. With, uh, this latest design, the applicant will need to submit an updated landscaping plan. But, uh, what they've given us so far illustrates how they, they can meet our requirements for landscaping. And, you know, again, what's kind of been the topic de jour relative to townhomes, uh, concerns about the elevations that face public streets, for example, you know, that side. This is not the initial elevation that the applicant submitted. They made some changes to add the wainscote on the bottom, windows, different bands. Um, this relief was already there. But, uh, frankly, those are some things that, as we've talked, I would anticipate may very well be requirements for project of, the projects of this nature in the future in Spanish Fork. And appreciate the applicant working with us maybe to get out a little bit ahead of some of those requirements. Um, likewise, uh, and this is the, this is the front-load unit where the garage is on the front of the home. Uh, quite a bit of relief, uh, two different materials but used in different ways to make it look, uh, even, use the word interesting. Um, not all of the units in the project will have this kind of color scheme to them. But, uh, you can see there's relief, there's a difference in materials, uh, type of garage door used that is gonna make it look like something other than a twenty-foot wide, uh, blank plain, uh, variation in the roof line. And then, can you take me to the next one, Scott?
Oh.
Kind of struggling here. Thank you. So, this, that one right there. So, again, this is the, the front-load units, how they will look from the public streets. Um, and this is the rear-load unit and how it will look from the public street. So, this is one of the things that we really want to see happen in a project like this, to have this be what's on display for everybody that goes through the development, not even so much this. You know, we're a big part of, uh, what people interact with and what people see as a garage door, a driveway. Um, uh, although I think the applicants have done a good job of, of kind of dressing that arrangement up here. But, uh, all being said, as I mentioned, I appreciate the applicant's efforts. The Planning Commission reviewed this two weeks ago and recommended that it be approved subject to the applicant making some modifications to address what I talked about earlier relative to parking. Also, subject to the applicant, uh, provide, excuse me, providing an updated rear elevation for any of the units that will face State Road fifty-one, which I just got about a half an hour ago from the applicant, sorry, look at the other side. So, they were concerned about these elevations and how they would look from the, uh, the state highway. Uh, the applicants have provided that. Um, I can show that to you on my phone if you'd like. But I think the applicant did exactly what the Planning Commission requested there. Um, and at this point, I have no reservations at all, uh, also recommending that the project be approved simply subject to the applicant at this point, I believe, updating the landscaping plan and submitting that to us. And if there are any other, uh, conditions still that haven't been met, that have been provided relative to utilities or anything like that by the DRC, that the applicant address those. So, that is a recommendation of approval for the zone change to go from R one-six to R three and a recommendation on the amended preliminary plat for Meadow Creek Ridge.
Okay, thank you. So, this is a public hearing. I, uh, would entertain a motion to go in public hearing?
So moved.
So moved.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Scobes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Anyone that'd like to come and talk about this, um, particular zone change, you're sure to welcome to come on up. Hey, long time no see. So, if you'd say your name again for the record?
All right. So, I'm Heidi Bradshaw. I am representing the people that actually live out there on State Road fifty-one. Um, so, our concern right now is with traffic. Our road right now is busy, especially during work hours, you know, people going to and from work. Um, you know, we realize we can't stop the development, but we don't want the high-density housing is our concern because we're putting that many more cars on our road, two-lane highway. And for, from my standpoint, I've seen more accidents on our road in the last year or two. Um, our other concern, well, so me personally, one instance happened just a couple of weeks ago. I was pulling into my driveway and this isn't the first time, but, and I had a guy that, I have traffic that doesn't slow down. They go out on that right-hand shoulder and don't try and slow down, no brakes, you know, to kind of maneuver around. Well, I had this person go past and I had my two daughters in the car with me. And I looked and I could tell the guy was cussing at me because I am trying to turn into my driveway with my blinker on. And I have made it a point, even my kids, I have two drivers, teenage drivers. I have told them, put your blinker on, clear back here or clear back here, depending on where you're coming from. So, as this guy is passing me, I looked over and I could tell he was cussing me out. Well, my daughter, she's like, Mom, he just flipped you off. So, I'm like, oh, really? Next thing I know, he pulls up in front of me, stops in the middle of the road, starts backing up towards me, like he was coming after me. And at that time, I had another car coming around me. And I was sitting there and I'm like, we are gonna have an accident right here in front of my face, you know, because that's what it was. The first car pulled off, then the other one. But, that's only one instance. We've had, out on that road, that road actually goes, has dips in it. There's spots where you cannot see if a car is down and you're coming up.
Which, which road are you referring to? Highway fifty-one?
Yeah, Highway fifty-one.
Okay, thank you.
Can you show us where your home is?
Yeah.
So, my house...
There's a laser right by your hand?
Okay. So, give me a second here.
Is it in the south of the expressway or is it?
It's actually, okay, so that is...
Way.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't, nope, go the other way.
Oh, okay.
So, my house is... So, my house is...
Just don't look at it. There you go.
Okay, so this is my house right here.
And the development?
So, the development will be all of that right there, right?
If your house is over trees, no?
No, yeah, my house is actually up just a little further, right here. So, that is my house, right where the arrow was.
So, are you in the county?
I'm actually Springville City. So, yep, right there is my house. And with all the development that's coming right up to the south of me, all of this across the road, that many more houses with that much more traffic is a concern. When the school buses come, so, my kids are supposed to ride the bus. In past years, because of the zone change and a program that my youngest is doing, I do have to take her to school. But in the past, the school bus coming, we've had people pass the school bus with its red lights on. So, it is a concern. Also, we've had concerns where a lot of this land out here is still agriculture. There's still people that actually do their farming, there's people irrigating. And so, when they are moving equipment, it comes back to the traffic again. We get impatient drivers and, you know, so, really, the whole impact of the concern is a lot more traffic on our road. And like I said, all down that road, there's a few kids that do jump on the bus and they're out by the road. So, that is really what we're concerned with. One way we actually thought maybe to help solve some problem is either reducing the speed, which, you know, we have to go through the state for that because it's a state road, more police patrol. I don't know how many times I've seen and heard people speed up and down that road and it's concerning. And the thing is, is eventually that road may be widened, you know, down the road. But right now, just that two-lane with, you know, you're putting an extra, what, almost five hundred cars on the road between this, let's see, where are we at again? That development and that new, okay, so this west side and then this whole new area on the east side. So, you know, and we even thought maybe not putting as many houses in there would even be another concern. But if you come sit out on my road and see the impact that that traffic has now, I mean, there's times I can sit there for twenty minutes just to try and pull out on the road.
Thank you.
Down.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else would like to come up and speak, address this issue? Well, you don't have to leave. Just got to ask you to come up. Okay, thanks for being here, scouts. We love our scouts.
I'll make a, make a motion to go out of public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any questions, comments?
I do. So, are they going to, are they going to build Spanish Fork Parkway?
Up to, yes.
The tracks to the Highway fifty-one, essentially?
What we've talked about so far is that they will build that part of the road at least to get to their driveway into the project, kind of eyeballing, I'm guessing it's about right here.
Okay.
We've also talked about them potentially finishing it as well, all the way up to the railroad tracks. And maybe Chris Thompson has a perspective he'd like to offer. We've also been talking about how to construct it on the other side of the tracks. And there's been some discussion about waiting to build it all the way to the tracks until we have the crossing ready to construct. So, I think that's kind of how we might be leaning today on both sides. But certainly, they would need to build it to get to where it would provide access to their development.
Because they only have the one access, right?
Exactly.
So, that would have to be to have the second access.
Yep.
How mu, how much acreage was added?
Ooh, that's a good question.
And four acres, then we added seventy-two homes onto that four acres?
No.
Forty.
They didn't go up that much. I'd have to go back, in fact, and look and see what the project was originally approved for, but it wasn't that. You remember what the original approval was?
Forty-eight, so we added forty-eight homes.
Okay. So, that, that part's a little bit more than ten units to the acre.
That's, that's two questions I have.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to ask, Heidi, have you talked to anyone about the state road at the state?
I have not.
Okay.
I mean, this is all...
Your first, Kay.
We came to a town meeting and it was me and my husband, and my husband's actually out of town tonight, so. I talked to a couple of neighbors, they weren't able to make it tonight, but as far as the state, we haven't been able to talk.
Chief or Chris, do either of you guys have insight of, with traffic studies or patrolling or accidents or anything, just off the top of your head?
Or a light?
UDOT just barely put a light right down here at Expressway, which I don't know that that would address her concerns. I, I can, I can really see her frustration. It's what we actually typically see when someone lives along an arterial road with the driveway. It's, it's, it's a tough situation which I'm not sure there is a really good answer for even, you know, when you go to UDOT or Springville and talk about these issues, it's just tough to have, have driveways off of arterial roads. It's part of the reason why we don't allow new driveways, you know, we don't allow this to happen as development occurs to have a driveway off of an arterial road. Capacity-wise, this is fine for handling the capacity. There's, there's a, a level of service as far as going by, but if you have a driveway, then, then, you know, it, it's tougher that way. Making a wider shoulder would help. Unfortunately, normally, the city doesn't construct the shoulders and the curb and gutter and sidewalks. That's usually the property owners that do that. In Spanish Fork City, we have a program where, let's say you wanted to construct the curb gutter and, and the shoulder and the sidewalk in front of your house, we would pay for all of the shoulder, the asphalt work, and then we would pay half of the curb and gutter and half of the sidewalk work so that you could get that in.
So, my concern with that, if I could just show you, so where it is agriculture out there, so, okay, so this is my house right here, okay? This ditch is an irrigation ditch. This is what we use to water my lawn and then the seven acres back behind that we run. So, right here, the irrigation water comes under the road right here, comes across, and we can either divert it this way or it comes across my driveway and back down. So, with curb and gutter, I don't know what you would do about that, but my house, the two houses, so actually where the development is going, Sharon Forbush's house, that house north of her, which is, can you corner right over here from my house? My house and there's two other houses that are on a spring. So, our water comes from a spring, whoops, sorry, and comes down, feeds these five, six houses, and that's where our water comes from. So, with curb and gutter, this irrigation water, I know, you know, they've had problems trying to get it all figured out with other developments, so that's also a concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you pull up the highway map? So, development is right here, and you're right, and you're right here?
Next, next one.
Yeah, right there?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, all of here...
Where's, where's the city property line?
Right there, my line.
So, you're just on the other side of the...
Yep.
Okay.
So, all of that is flood irrigated along with across the road, the house up, let's see. That house, they do have irrigation water. And then the next house, Queen Pigs, he also has agricultural land, which he does water. And then he also has some back on the west side.
Do we, Chris, thank you. So, is this going to be built in phases?
Yeah.
And which phase are you going to start with?
Right, just next to this new piece of system.
Right here?
The next one down.
Right here? So, you'll be construction that road first then? Okay.
That's the only road that goes on the line.
Right now, until you get...
So, we, you go up?
You want to come up and...
Oh, good, this will be good. That is a crazy road. I can understand your concerns, but...
We met with Austin Tripp and a couple guys in his office that, down there at Orem, Region Two office. And, you know, this started about five years ago and these, all these intersections were looked at. So, we had to take in consideration this driveway to this house, this driveway and her driveway and Miss Sharon Forbush's home, her driveway here. Anyway, we had a couple, we had two or three roads out here, I think we did at one time, and now we're down to one from this frontage all the way to here. And so, everything's dumping onto this Spanish Fork Parkway up and down, all the way up and down here, which I think that was great, you know, we only had to do one all the way from here to here. And that's really all we could do to get their approval from UDOT, so. We really don't have much choice in here to slide things around. They have these requirements, you know, you have to be so many feet away and, from driveways and other roads or...
Do you know if UDOT has plans to at least have turning lanes so when people are slowing down going into their subdivisions, that they can get off that main thoroughfare road?
Yeah, we have to, like this here, we're going to have to do a de-acceleration lane right here, strip. And then this, I think this de-acceleration lane was put in for so...
That's crucial then, okay.
You know, the problem is, we can't keep going up the road a half a mile or...
Well, no, you're in Springville.
That's a different city and...
Yeah.
We can't do anything for you there.
But I'm glad to hear that you're doing a de-acceleration lane. I think that's crucial.
And then we're widening the road and if, if it really becomes a problem, you know, this whole thing is completely controlled by UDOT. I mean...
Exactly.
Chris might have a small, small influence.
No, he's not that big of a...
But they could stripe it to four lanes, but they're going to have to probably do a lot more road.
And I think eventually they will.
Oh, yeah, eventually, I'm sure they will. But it all depends on, like Chris said, if it's the traffic level, you know, if it's A, B, C or...
Right.
Or failing, then they...
It'll depend on the, the traffic and, and then they will make that determination. Eventually, as that continues to build out, out there, unfortunately, it will continue to build out there.
You can see how...
It's just that, I mean, because the...
And so, you'll, you'll see more, they, they will have to address that with the traffic patterns and they'll, eventually, I could see that turning into a, a four-lane highway eventually.
Which we, maybe eventually it probably would be.
Yeah.
But it's just, you know, the impact right now that that development could have until that's done.
Well, they have Salisbury's, you know, from, what, twelve years ago, right there. And then this new apartment project over here will widen that and...
Sure.
Just pieces.
This gives you a good image of how wide it'll be. And today, it's only two lanes, which I think helps add to the problem that, that she's been speaking to. This is not unlike Canyon Road in Spanish Fork today. That is also a two-lane road and in some areas has a, has a three, passive left turn lane and, and some shoulders, but, but really, it's just one side of the road is developed and the other side isn't.
That's where you've been tearing down the houses?
No, that's Center Street.
Oh, Center Street.
And, and so, yeah, I mean, right now, she's, she's really talking to a growing pain issue that...
Exactly.
Development eventually solves, it also creates it, right? More traffic development brings more traffic, but it also solves it by making that road a little bit more complete on either side. You, I mean, you think you're adding about twenty feet of asphalt? You'd probably know.
You've got UDOT's blessing bringing out that, okay.
And to cross the road with utilities to go across. But, I mean, we've tried, you know, we've put tons of time in this and effort and I feel bad too. I mean, I'm a country boy, but if it wasn't me, it'd be another developer standing right here in my same shoes. It's just enough pressure that there's needs to be more housing for people and the demand's there. But we try to do, when we do do it, we try to do a real quality. And thanks to Dave and Chris's help, they helped guide the ship through it. It wasn't just us, they, they definitely had their input for sure, so.
Right.
Thank you. Thanks for making those changes to make it look, look good. And is this going to be an HOA, I'm assuming?
Yeah.
Okay, it looks good, thanks.
Any other questions, comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance Z eleven dash eighteen, changing the zoning designation and amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork City for Meadow Creek Ridge Town Homes, zone change and the Meadow Creek Town, excuse me, Meadow Creek Ridge Town Homes amended preliminary plat.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Member Beck, a second by...
Give it to Kier.
Councilman Scobes. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. We are going to not do B, is that correct? Is that correct?
That is correct, yes. So, pardon me?
Sorry, is that just the zoning?
Nope, that was both. Yep. So, Legacy Farms, if I can just mention one thing, this is at the request of the applicant. We had a marathon meeting yesterday with them to work on developing an amended development agreement or annexation agreement for the Legacy Farms development. This is a project that's just a little bit to the east of what we were just looking at on the other side of the railroad tracks, a project that's anticipated to have about seven hundred and fifty homes in it. I think we've issued building permits now for two hundred and forty homes, so we still have a considerable way to go before the project is complete. You know that we've been working with the applicant now to have an agreement, again, amended so that they can make some changes to the plat to include, for example, a church site in the project. And in short, what you will see in the future is either the agreement that we're working on now that would make some pretty substantial changes to the project and how some of the different facilities and Legacy Farms are constructed and paid for, or should we not be able to come do an agreement on those points? We'd probably bring back something that's more streamlined, that just focuses on the addition... focuses on the addition of the church, and some density issues, and things like that, so, um, again, um, the applicants are anxious, uh, but we as staff don't feel like, uh, we're ready at all, we don't have an agreement to present yet to the council to consider, for example, that's why we're asking that it be continued, um, and would anticipate being back in maybe as little as two weeks with that draft agreement and everything to consider.
Okay, all right, ordinance eighteen eighteen repealing and reenacting the stormwater utility chapter of municipal code.
That was a mouthful.
Yeah. It's all the smoke.
Okay, just really quickly on this one, we, uh, had quite a few changes in the state requirements for stormwater that came through, uh, we actually hired an attorney, uh, who had expertise on, uh, the stormwater, uh, management programs that cities have to have. Our management program actually goes into full enforcement effect this February, this coming February, uh, to where we could be fined if we're not following it, and so, what we did is we hired an attorney to go through our existing stormwater law, and make recommendations to, to bring it in compliance with our management plan, and so, uh, no real major issues here, but just mostly saying that everyone has to keep the stormwater clean, but there's a lot of changes.
You're not going to jail?
Hopefully not.
Hope not.
Seems like there's so many opportunities, though.
[laughing]
But, uh, I think, I, I think this will be a good change to bring our law in compliance with our management plan, and-
Right.
And make it easier for our guys to enforce.
Thank you.
Hey, any questions on that? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance eighteen dash eighteen, repealing and reenacting the stormwater utility church, or chapter of the municipal code.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilmember Beck, this also is a roll call vote, uh, Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
That passes. Okay, Summit Energy Wholesale Natural Gas Contract.
We, we have two facilities as a city that uses a lot of natural gas, that's our wastewater treatment plant, and our swimming pool, and, uh, we've found that if we contract to, to buy that gas wholesale through Summit Energy, uh, we could save about forty thousand dollars a year, so this, uh, this allows us to move forward with that.
Like saving money, Chris, you know that.
Well, then, I'll make a motion to approve the Summit Energy Wholesale Natural Gas Contract.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck, a second by Councilman Argal, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes.
We use the savings to buy one of them big motorhomes, Seth?
I think he's listening to you. It didn't come from drug money.
That's us up next, when he's free.
All right, employee-
Tyler, you're back.
Hey, guys.
Oh, what a guy.
Oh, how was it?
So, employee salary range.
Got some progress, okay, you ready?
I'm always ready.
All right, so, uh, just a little brief briefing for those of the public that may not know how we have our, uh, our compensation structured here at the city, so each year, we go out to the market, we compare against sixteen other cities in Utah that are comparable in size, comparable in services, and then we, uh, we ask them for their salary ranges for the positions that we have here at our city, and then we benchmark those against ours, and we take the new averages, and this year, the market actually pushed up three point two five percent, uh, was, was the increase that, uh, we would see with our employees if, uh, if everybody stayed right where they were at today in their range, so, uh, the, the great thing about the system that we have in place is, so we have the market adjustment, but then we also have, uh, the ability for our employees, if they perform well, they can move up in their range and get paid higher in their range, and the, the great thing that we've seen with this is, we've been able to retain employees, and Spanish Fork City has a great reputation for, uh, retention, retaining employees, and, and being a great place to work, and the culture, which is, you know, it starts at the top with you guys, is, 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 uh, elected officials, uh, is very positive, and so, um, we're, we're grateful that we have such incredible employees that, uh, put in hard work and can progress, just as our, uh, city slogan says, you know, pride and progress, so, uh, this year, there is in the budget four point two five percent budgeted, so there's a little bit in there for that merit, um, to, to push that up a little bit, too. You guys have been provided with the, uh, the ranges, and where they've gone over the last year, if you have any questions about those, or any questions on anything else regarding the salary study?
Thank you for all the time and energy it took, so-
Oh, you're welcome.
Appreciate that, thanks.
I gotta tell you that, uh, it was a lot harder when I was doing it, and I don't mean that, I don't mean that like I used to walk uphill both ways, I mean, I wasn't as sharp and smart, and Tyler has really enhanced the system, made it a lot easier to update, and, uh, I'm gonna say-
I noticed it was a lot easier.
Yeah, I'm gonna say it took him like fifteen minutes to do this.
[laughing]
That's not true, but he's made a significant improvement to, uh, the, the behind-the-scenes work that goes into calculating the ranges, it's still very easy to explain, probably more easy, uh, I think, to explain, but, uh, hats off to Tyler for the work he's done to make our system even better.
All right, I'd entertain a motion.
Kier, do you wanna make a motion?
Yeah, there's a slight delay, but I didn't wanna jump all over anyone speaking, um, yeah, I'd make a motion to approve the employee's salary register.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Councilman Scobes, a second by Councilmember Beck, all in favor, say aye? All right.
Aye.
All right, that passes, discussion, uh, two-hour parking limit along Kirby Lane and Commerce Drive. They don't all jump up at once to talk about this, you know?
So, as we've built, Commerce Way is the new road that, uh, goes out there by the theater, and separates the theater from, uh, the Sapa process, Kirby Lane continues on down to, uh, the Sapa facility, uh, so we're talking about basically the area right in here, and we, we probably wanna extend it up, up this way, but for many, many years, that has been a, a little traveled road, it's, it's been out of the way, it's, it's been a good place for truckers to come along and, and pull off the highway and sleep for the night, or, we have a few that live here in town, it's been a good place for them to park their truck, and, you know, where they go home for a day or two, but with the commercial development out there, that's become problematic, the street is becoming a lot busier, uh, Sapa's doing well, they've got a lot of delivery trucks coming in, and it's to the point now that we're concerned about the hazards that, uh, parking the large trucks out there is creating, uh, and, and there's some other smaller vehicles, too, but it's largely the, the big vehicles that are causing the problem, so we're proposing a, a two-hour time limit for parking along the street there, that would be similar to what we have on Main Street, our Main Street is a three-hour parking limit, and, and the reason it's three and not two, back when they did it, is because we have two churches on Main Street, and they needed a three-hour block, uh, so we're talking about a, a two-hour block, but, you know, two, three hours would, would probably be sufficient, so, this is not an action item, but it is a discussion item, we wanna get the council that information, we wanna get your thoughts and your input, and if, if you're fine with, we prepare an ordinance similar to what we did with Main Street, and, uh, limit parking on the side of Kirby Lane to two hours.
That'll be on Commerce and Kirby.
Also Commerce.
Commerce is a private street, so we won't control that, uh, you know, the Canyon Creek Development will control that itself, now, they, they've granted us public easements for the use, but, but they'll have to control the parking there.
So, just Kirby?
Just Kirby.
This is a discussion item, so if you have any thoughts about it?
Well, well, the other thing, let me follow up on Stacy's question, 'cause the other thing we could do is, is we may wanna follow that up on Canyon Creek Parkway, and even, even maybe Spanish Fork Parkway, as we've got Lowe's coming up here, and, and we see that, that business grow, and the traffic increase, uh, so there are some places that we could extend that, just Commerce Way's not one of them.
We haven't seen much truck parking here, I know I've seen it here.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I just assume they're staying at that little hotel, but-
Some of them may have been, and, and, you know, we might wanna think about that, but, but, you know, if we move it off here, you know, are they gonna move to there? So, so I think Stacy raises a really important question to discuss.
I usually do.
But, but this new road is also wide enough, if they were to, I mean, I, I, I quite, if they were to stay at one of the hotels, they could park here, and/or stay inside, but they probably need to come out of there, that's probably why they're coming out and staying here, except they're either going home or staying the night.
Hey, Walmart says they can always park there and stay.
Yeah, they do.
And they can get their healthy and active steps in to get to the-
They might have to just, uh-
Hotel.
Um, yeah, we, what we wanna do is, if we're gonna enforce something here, we need to anticipate, like you say, them moving somewhere else, and so we need to-
Right.
Keep that discussion with all of them.
We, we know the hospital's broken ground here.
Right.
Uh, we think that Lowe's has started some of their groundwork this week, if they haven't started yet, it'll be starting this week up in this area, so, we, we know there's growth still coming, we don't wanna just move it from one, move the problem from one area to another nearby area.
We don't wanna move, but you also don't wanna get too soon, because you will have trucks and equipment parking constantly where they're doing construction for both these projects.
Through construction, they usually can pull off the street.
Pull off site.
So, if we had a, a real issue with this right now?
There's a lot of trucks.
I know there's a lot of trucks, and I, I see them, uh-
Yeah.
It is, the business is there.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I want, no-
Yeah, Wiggy Wash has been blocked a handful of times, and Taco-
That's right.
Taco Time's been blocked a couple of times.
Well, we need to address that, and then, and maybe what we need to do is, if we see them moving over here, then we address that on a-
We can always do that.
Case by case, so.
We can, we can do this here now, and then act later if it becomes a problem.
Right.
What is your mentality, what, what would you think to do?
Just no parking.
Just no parking?
No parking.
For, for three, two hour.
Then, I mean, because I know there was Sapa, you know, trucking out there, and if they have to stop them in there, I mean, and I'm not saying that-
Sapa has their own parking area back in here for their vehicles.
They have a-
Does-
Fits with Kirby, they should allow for parking back for their trucks back there.
They have plenty of room back there, they-
Yeah, they have a couple acres.
It's more probably a convenience for them to come out here.
Stay in the rooftop, the rooftop there.
No.
We think, we think they're sleeping in their, their cab, most of semis are, they're built that way.
I mean, if they have the park right, somewhere in that area, yes, there are the truck stops, but there's delivery somewhere there, but-
No, we, we think-
What if actors that you have on?
We think they're choosing here.
But if they're staying overnight, they're not delivering.
Cause the, the, the truck stops charge them, we think that's why they're coming here, cause they're-
Yeah. Okay, so I think, like I say, let's, we could address that, and then on a case-by-case basis, we can move, move up there, that'd be a good discussion on that. Okay, Main Street Trees? Bill?
Yes, sir.
Mister Tree Man?
Um, no.
Mister Tree?
I'd, I'd come every time if I knew you guys had so much fun here.
We do.
I'll just bring donuts.
I didn't mean that.
What?
Well, thank you for this opportunity to talk about the trees on Main Street, uh, in two thousand eight and nine, we started having the trees on Main Street die en masse. They finally reached a point where the roots were just too big for the planter space, and those were, uh, what were those, honey locusts?
Honey locusts.
And they looked great, but they just got too big, so we put together a plan to change those trees out, and we searched far and wide for the right tree, we landed on the Chanticleer pear, it's a, it's a Pyrrhus calariana, is what they call them, and so we had a hundred and twenty trees to replace, actually, there were about eighty-eight of the other trees, but, uh, we had other places where we wanted to put some other ones, so we put those in place in two thousand ten, eleven, and twelve, and, uh, since then, we've had some that got knocked out by trucks, others that have died for other reasons, some have actually contracted a disease called fire blight, it's a bacteria disease, and it takes out those trees, and sometimes it stays on one tree, other times it'll spread, we haven't had too much trouble with it, two months ago, I noticed we had a couple, but I thought, well, I better change them out in the fall, and then I turned my back, and ten seconds later, we had eighteen that'll probably need to be replaced, ten seconds was a bit of an exaggeration.
Don't turn your back on them.
I can't turn my back on those trees, and you can see what's happening to them, uh, if you catch it early enough, and it's only a limb or two, sometimes you can prune those, and then treat the trees, there's home remedies, but there's also other remedies that are , uh, commercial sprays, can't remember the name of the one recommended by Max Derrington, sounded like a one you'd use for your home remedy, but, um, so here's our thought and our plan, we recognize there in the public view, uh, we don't, uh, have a firm plan on which tree we ought to put back, I do know these need to be replaced, uh, we plan on taking these out sometime in the next probably thirty days, uh, I don't think they can be repaired, I think they need to be replaced, it just happens so fast, it just turns your stomach, I feel terrible about it, but if you take a look at some of these other ones, they're obviously a different variety than the ones that are dying, I think these are more along the lines of a Aristocrat, or a Bradford type of a, a Pyrrhus, uh, I think I'm saying that right, anyway, a pear tree, and they're doing great, so maybe it's that, maybe, we've looked at also, um, an eastern red bud, of, of certain variety called Forest pansies, done really well, I got some of that counsel from John Neves from Seven Tree Service, we've also looked at the possibility of a ginkgo biloba, and maybe a combination of several, maybe six of this, any of another.
I think I'd take that.
A what?
I think I'd take that pill.
The ginkgo biloba, yeah, yeah.
It helps with good questions.
Well, it'll keep your tree strong, too, so, so we'll see, here's the thing-
Lost control.
Well, I'll, I'll shut up here, but the thing is-
I'm impressed you could say the name.
I can say that one, it's so unique, um, there's no perfect tree, everybody has a pro and a con, and you get different counsel and advice from different people, so we're in the process of, of gathering counsel on this right now, from, uh, Arborist, uh, Max Derrington's a good counsel, the guys at Seven Trees are a good counsel, there'll be others, I've talked to Bart Morrell quite a bit about it, and so we're taking a look at what to do next, but the bottom line is, the first part of this is just to take out those ones that are stricken so badly they can't re-be repaired, and then possibly treat the other ones, uh, the chemical that's recommended has to be put on during the time of their embossment, so.
And that might affect our flowers at the base?
That's true, the home remedies that are like a vinegar, uh, water solution, treat these trees, but it's usually used on ones that are just getting started, not the ones that are already have six or eight years in the ground, and it will damage the annuals underneath, so, we wanted, we were thinking about doing that in the fall time, but after I talked to Max, he said, the only treatment for that is gonna have to be put on during blossom time.
It will happen.
So, we'll be holding the annuals in about three weeks, and get ready for the planting of the pansies, anyway.
Hey, let's get a tree that stays, so we don't have to keep replacing them.
Well, here's the thing about trees-
Did you just replace those a while ago?
Well, I, I realize that, the average age of a street tree like this is only about seven to eleven years, that's the average across the nation, these trees are under such abuse by just the chemicals in the air, because they're right along Main Street, the salts that come-
Put a lot of smoke in the air.
That hurts them, too.
All of our trees we die.
They try to turn that into good oxygen for us, they do, uh, so, yeah, if we get, we got twenty-two years out of the first ones.
Yeah, we did.
But they were way overdue.
Way over.
And we've got several here that are overdue, too, so, my plan is not to try to change everything out, but just start changing them as they die, and have to be replaced.
How many years did we get out of these trees?
Yeah, those are, some of those are over a hundred and twenty years old.
Oh, what kind are they?
Well, they're too big for this application.
Wait.
But they're called London plane trees.
See, these people right here, they spend all this money on their signs, they really don't like a lot, she's that big covering up their signs.
Dave Anderson had-
Would be a hundred years to get them to the point where they're out of the range of the signs.
Hey, Bill, what's your timetable to take them out, sorry, you're-
Probably the first or second week in October.
Okay, so that'll be-
We wanna do it after the annual's removed, and so we can pull them up- We want to do it after the annual's removed and so we can pull them up and then get those out of there.
Get the root off.
And then come back with, uh, yeah, come back with the, um,
There.
Pansies.
Will you, you'll want to plant in the spring?
So we'll probably plant in the spring, but we need to make a real good decision on what we want to put there. So we're still gathering information.
So this is something that'll cause maybe a little bit of consternation amongst some people?
That's our concern.
And we want to make sure that
It's a big word.
It's a good word.
Okay.
It's a real one.
Okay.
I checked.
Thank you.
You're welcome. But we, I don't know what else you do.
Uh, yeah, no, we gotta do, we, we want our Main Street to look beautiful.
We do.
And we get a lot of compliments on that, so.
We take it seriously.
Yeah, we want them, put it to Spanish Fork standards and let's make it right.
This is definitely not that standard right here.
No.
Any other questions?
Mike.
Okay.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, Bill.
Love you guys.
It's nice to see your smiley face.
Love you.
Good to be here.
Thanks, Bill.
Catch you later.
Come again when you're in town.
You bet.
All right. Teneck Railroad Project Agreement. He's back.
All right. Springville applied for a MAG tip grant to eliminate, uh, a railroad track from about here somewhere, all the way up to where it comes into this line. Uh, the reason being is, uh, UTA plans to run their line, uh, adjacent to this line and then come across right here. And once that's done, there's really not much need to, uh, have this railroad track there. Uh, that received funding to the tune around $5 million. And coming up to start, uh, construction on it, Springville has to sign what is called a, a financial aid agreement with UDOT. And what this agreement says is, uh, here's the money that's appropriated for it. There's, if it costs more money than that, then Springville's on the hook to pay the difference. Now, this, this agreement or this project benefits UTA because it builds this line, benefits Spanish Fork because we no longer will have this crossing or this crossing when Spanish Fork Parkway comes in and hits that point and goes all the way to Provo. And it benefits UDOT because they are over railroad crossings and they want to eliminate as many railroad crossings as possible. So Springville's asked that UDOT, UTA, and Spanish Fork share that risk. Now, my whole experience with mountain land association and governments is whenever a project like this goes over, you go back to, to the committee and they appropriate more money. So we feel like there's not a lot of risk here. Uh, but shared fourth way, four, four ways, there's even less risk, so.
Can we get an agreement like that the next land deal we do at Springville?
So at any rate, uh, I would recommend that, uh, we tell Springville we would be, uh, we would look favorably towards an agreement like this. If they get that green light, then they'll draw up the documents and get it to us next time.
So do we want to do not to exceed type deal?
You can't do that. That's, that's their whole problem.
I understand. I'm just, I'm just throwing, I'm being the devil's advocate here, Chris, do you?
We have signed a lot of these agreements and have never been bitten by it. So I I
We've had a lot of fires up in the canyon and never been bitten either.
Yeah, so. I, at any rate, Springville does worry about it a lot.
Yeah.
A lot. And, and so they want to share that risk, I guess.
I don't have a problem with that, Chris, just for you. I don't have a problem with that.
All right. I'll let them know and then you should see it next thing.
You need to ask these guys. Are you guys okay with that?
Good.
Kier, you okay?
Kier, you all right?
Yeah, that sounds just fine.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Lou, can I say the next thing? I don't know.
Tyler, do you have any, uh, new update on your meeting you attended pertaining to the fire?
So the information
Come up to the mic. That's a big boy. Thank you.
The information they just gave out at the community meeting about the fire, uh, was that the Pol Creek Fire is now 25% contained, which is 2% more than it was yesterday. And the Bald Mountain Fire, which previously had been 0% contained, is now 4%. So they made a lot of progress there. And they have, um, they have, uh, high hopes that tomorrow with the Bald Mountain Fire, which is the one that's a little bit west of us, um, will be contained even more because they've been able to put more dozer lines in. Uh, our, uh, close-knit, uh, friends up in Cover Bridge Canyon, they're still continuing to try to keep a, a constant flow of water on there to kind of wet the ground down and keep them, um, from having, uh, that, that fire come off of the ridge. It's still about a quarter mile away, which is, I believe, about how far it's been for the past few days. So
A couple of days, sir.
Thankfully, not a lot of, of change there. Still no structures, no living structures have been damaged and no injuries.
About Diamond Fork, did they give an update on Diamond Fork at all?
Uh, Diamond Fork, uh, yeah, the canyon. I'd have to look at my notes. I don't remember exactly what they said there, but I don't want to misspeak to that.
Couple mile fire growth around the Diamond Fork area, not quite to Juan Road.
So not quite.
Juan Road?
Not quite to Juan's Road.
Juan's Road.
For those of you that want to know how to spell that, W-H-A-N-R-O-A-D-S. I spelled it J-U-A-N and apparently that was incorrect.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. You haven't been up there, have you?
Not for a long time.
You haven't gone out there in camp with the scouts.
Not for a long time.
All right. Hey, thank you for that update. Okay.
I move that we go in a class, closed session for reasonable, reasonable limited litigation and land transactions.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilmember Beck. Call in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Thank you. Appreciate everyone being here.
Yeah, it's here. Don't go away.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you for everyone that came.